Let's start now with Lou.
So it's a statement first or there'll be questions?
And questions, and then closing, yes.
My name's Lou Andrade. I'm a hard board member. I've been on the board since 94. So I'm the oldest board member now on the board, oldest serving board member. And it's been my pleasure, can you hear?
That mic doesn't, it's not-
It doesn't project.
It's not a PA.
So I have to-
Okay.
Should I stand or?
Yes, please. The front mic is not working. He will stand so that you can hear him more clearly.
Okay. Alright. My name's Lou Andrade. I'm a longest-serving board member on the district. I've been on the district since 94. I was born in Hayward. I was raised in Cherryland area. I went to schools in San Lorenzo. I have friends throughout the area, including Castor Valley. And I finally moved to Castor Valley around 2000. And my children, my two kids, have gone to Castor High Schools. I've known the district or the area since before that, but I've lived here since around 2000. And so the board, when I first got on, you know, it was a well-loved district. The district was well-loved and it was just a little bit catching up, you know, because we had a big hit from Prop 13 that we really never recovered from. And ever since, you know, we've been trying to, I've been trying to push the district and kind of address some of the issues that were there, which was kind of lack of parks in certain areas. You know, and it was kind of Hayward dominated. In the 90s, I was, I helped start and I was the first president of Cherryland Community Association. And I was involved with, you know, getting, promoting better county services. And I won't take credit for all the things that have happened, but I have to say that the county was starting to listen to us and Castor Valley, of course. And in Cherryland at least, we got a new community center. And we got a new, some new sidewalks and a new fire station. Okay, I'm done.
The buzzer will go off, but I always permit people to finish their sentence, okay?
Anyway, I've been proud to be a board member. It's a great district. I think we fine-tuned it to like where it's operating as good as I've ever seen it. And I want to continue with that bond. It's really made a big difference. And we've got some real professional, updated management, which I'm really proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hatcher?
Great. I guess I probably started by projecting my seat here, but I'm Rick Hatcher. I have been on the board since 2000. I was appointed in 2015 and then had election in 2016 and 2020. I am, I was a 26-year resident of Cherryland. And yes, a lot of work has been done in Cherryland. It's when I got there, it was, you know, a challenged community with the resources just weren't there. So I see what it's, not only from the infrastructure from the county, but also from what HARD has put in there. We're really proud of that. I occurred to me living in San Lorenzo. And when I got appointed in 15, it was a really unique occurrence because you know what happens during appointments, you know, especially with our governor. It's like everybody comes out of the woodwork. And so during this process, I, you know, I grew up with HARD. You know, my tagline was that I grew up in San Lorenzo, I live in Cherryland, I work in Castor Valley, I hang out in Hayward. You know, our entire district. I feel very district blessed to have had the resources. But during the appointed process, it was narrowed down to just a few of us and it, you know, some heavy hitters in the community. And, you know, when I looked at what I bring to the table, it's a combination of, you know, the work we see that needs to be done, that's the work that is to be done. And then the last thing is who is to do the work? And I feel between leadership of understanding issues and leadership in implementing the issues and then getting as a leader to have folks to follow you to do and value those issues. That as I got on the hard board, it was, and Lou came on, in his time it was challenges. When I came on, it was just, we had never had funds. We hadn't built parks since the 60s. So by, you know, putting together new community support, because who didn't like their parks? You know, it's not like you're coming into an organization that they're saying, hey, there's issues. But when you get involved with a district like this, you see the depth of the issues. And so my job is to really get in there and to continue to dust off, make hard and improve hard and to really tell our story now that we've done so much work for this community. So I'm really looking forward to, I have another round of work to do to get this work done.
Mr. Rosen?
I'm Peter Rosen. I am a 55-year resident of Castor Valley. I grew up here. My daughter goes to school here. And I was very involved with HARD before I got elected to the board four years ago for the first time. I was on the bond oversight committee. I was on the citizens advisory committee. I'd been using parks. I played softball as an adult through the park system. I've just, HARD's always been a part of my life. And it's now, part of my wife uses the programming. My daughter uses the programming. It's been very helpful to have all of us involved and engaged. But as you've heard from both of my fellow board members, we're at a position now with HARD that I feel very lucky to be where we are right now. To come in, to have been able to come into the district at a time when we actually have an opportunity to actually make change. And when we passed Measure F1 Bond, $250 million bond, almost 80% of the vote, it allowed us to do all these things that have been envisioned for years that we never had the opportunity to do it. But the other part about it is because we never had any money, we've been able to concentrate on leveraging that. And all these parks that are going in, we're finding additional bond money, we're finding partnerships, we're finding collaborations, we're trying to make the best out of what we have because we're so used to finite resources. I'm very proud of the work that HARD's done. I'm standing on the shoulders of the people that came before. I think we've got a very functioning board. My background, I'm a landscape contractor by trade. We have a planner, we have an insurance agent, we have a real estate agent, we have a ex-city council member with- Yeah, and I just told the- Yeah, but no, but she also had recreation, that was her background in college. But I just wanted to say that we work really well together and hopefully we'll continue to do so.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the audience before I start? For HARD? Did you get any questions for HARD board members?
I do.
Okay. Well, she's coming up. Let me start with one other one. And we'll start, this time we'll start with Rick for your response. It is, many areas within the HARD Hayward area recreation department suffer from a lack of parks or open space. What are your plans to remedy this situation?
Yeah, the interesting thing is that, you know, very few areas actually, there's some requirements from the Quinbi Act to allow us to, that require us to have parks in the area. And when we look at it, we've identified through our master plan process, these specific areas. Historically, the Ashland corridor had been incredibly park deficient. And now we have four recreational parks that are going in. One will be having a ribbon cut in here the next month. So identifying those locations, we have an area in Castor Valley that folks that go, Castor Valley has all these parks. But the area near Grove Way over there, on the way going in from Redwood Road into A Street, there's no parks within the walking distance as required. So the identification of this issue is through our master plan. We have a strategic plan, which actually then implements and puts it in the process, puts it in place to be able to find that. So, you know, you gotta know who we are and you gotta know what we are. So the ability to take a look at the areas is solidified through the process. And I think that is what we're extremely proud of. When I got to HARD, you know, we had master plans, we had strategic plans, but we've rewritten how we do our business. And I think that is an incredible accomplishment. Now it's the implementation point of like how do we get parks built and the funds together. And we have those processes in place also.
Mr. Rosen?
So as Rick just mentioned, the Grove Way area is pretty much the biggest donut hole in our entire district right now. We have the master plan and through a lot of community outreach and through data analysis, we've looked at where people go and we have, the goal is to have a park within a 10-minute walk of everyone. And that's the big donut hole. And so we're trying to fix that. Be that as it may, there's also things that we can do to activate some of the other parks and partner with other agencies, Ashland and Cherryland. We bought some property right next to a new community center that is being built with a daycare that we're partnering with the housing development to build that daycare. And so what's happening now is we bought the property and we're building the park behind it. And then we got so much grant money, we went and bought the property in front of it, so now we have a throughway. So not only is it just going to be a park, it's going to be a park that's actually going to be really highly functional for the neighborhood. Those are the kind of things we're trying to do. We're trying to improve a lot of the parks that we have here in Castor Valley. You know, we've done some work on the community center, the picnic areas. The Green Ridge, we planted 120 trees recently. We've looked at improving a skate park. We're doing some other parks that are right outside of the area that are right on the border of us, Mission and Hampton. We're activating, it's probably going to be six to nine pickleball courts, a bi-pump, punk- a bi-pump course of picnic areas. And then we've got the big one is Valley View, which is a huge park that's twice the size of the community center that's taken a long time to develop and to design. And it's going up over by Sydney. And we've actually got some preliminary drawings and we've actually met with the community and figured out what we're going to do in the interim up there. That's going to satisfy a regional draw for a lot of the community.
I'm a city planner by trade, by trade, and I was architect by training. And when I look at the district, there's a lot of gaps in on it. And I think parks are really what helps make communities. So Castor Valley and the incorporated area in general was built out without many parks. It was just the way it was set out. And so Castor Valley deserves five, five-acre parks, but that's not going to happen because everything's built out. So you gotta look at what's available when you can and take that opportunity. So when this Valley View came up, you know, we bought that before F1 was passed. You know, that was, you know, because we grabbed it and we knew we didn't have the funds to develop that. But we needed to think long range. And so we bought that, our property's 24 acres. And, you know, it's gone some back and forth about how to develop it. But I think we have the plans now and we're in working drawing, so we will be developing in the next two or three years. And we have the funds for it. A lot of these things, if you don't buy the land, you don't, you lose it forever. So we're still in Castor Valley area. We're trying, well, I don't know what would be saying. We're trying to work out something with the school district, Hayward School District has a school that may be available. We've also expressed interest in CB Sands old property. So if stars align, we may be able to get one or two parcels and, you know, throughout the district. That's for Castor. But in the district in general, we try to get, you know, when something's available, we try to get it. Because it may not be, we may not have the funding and it's kind of heartbreaking to have a sign saying future parks. Try not to be able to do anything with it. But if I had a magic wand, I'd just, you know, do it. But you gotta buy the property, you gotta do it. And so we've been able to in these last couple of years, purchase some properties if we have the funds, the money, everything aligned. And so we've got some new parks coming on, which is great, in some underserved areas. And so I think, you know, this Valley is a long way to meeting some of the needs of Castor Valley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I paraphrase this. Does HARD have a funding problem?
So let me put something in perspective that I don't think most people realize. So currently our budget's about $45 million a year. Pre Prop 13 level, if we actually, when HARD was established and the funding mechanism, you can correct me on this if I'm wrong on this, but the funding mechanism that was originally set up for this special district included additional funding. And currently, post Prop 13, there's something that's happened and it happened, it hit us twice. Something called ERAV that took money from special districts. And because HARD is the largest recreation park district, it's one of the largest special districts in the state as far as population and funding opportunities. The hit last year was over $18 million. So if we had another $18 million, that would be a $63 million budget. Our parks would look amazing. We'd have free, more free programming than we currently have. We'd have community centers, we'd have plenty of pickleball, we'd have, I mean, all of these things would be happening. So there is a funding problem there. But acknowledging that, moving on, what we've done is we've leveraged this bond. It's the only time we've ever asked for a bond. And that bond money, we have leveraged in ways, you know, the $250 million bond is, we've gotten close to $50 million in additional grant money and partnership from that. So the communities, we're trying to be creative with how we leverage every dollar and every resource. And we've got a foundation that's become more and more active. And so the HARD Foundation is also helping to fund things and encouraging endowments and other things. And we're finding a way to make it work. But we're very solvent, we're fiscally responsible. We have money in the bank, which I'm sure Rick will talk about what happened when he was first on the board. But we are as fiscally sound as we've ever been despite the fact that we should have more money that is technically was set up for us.
Yeah, the ERAV and the whole funding of the state, the state took a lot of money out of us. And this is something that's kind of an esoteric game that the state plays. And it was post Prop 13, we lobbied Sacramento several times, almost got it back and never were able to do that. But that's more like day-to-day funding, you know. If we had that, I don't think we would have had it to do the bond, but we did the bond and that's really helped out. And on a regular basis, I think we're funded pretty well. We have a reserve. We've enabled a lot of new efficiencies. You've probably seen the website and things are moving in the right direction. We've, one of our capital improvements is a solar program where over, when it's completely, we'll save like $35 million over like the next 20 years or something like that in electrical costs. You know, just things like that, just those kind of efficiencies. So the district, I think, is going the wrong way, the right way, I'm sorry, is going in the right way, right direction. And, you know, we used to have to borrow the, from the county, you know, to cover the property tax deficit, you know, every, you know. You know, we'd get, we wouldn't get the funding right away, so we'd have to kind of take a loan from the county. We don't do that anymore. You know, we don't pay interest for that anymore. So we've done that, we've enabled all these efficiencies. And I think it's just, it's in the right direction, right, the right path right now. So as I said, I've never seen it as well-run as it has been the last 10 years, yeah, I think 10 years. It's getting better every day.
We're government agents. I mean, do we have funding problems? I mean, it's inherent into the, really the structure. When I got to HARD 10 years ago as a sole proprietor for most of my life, it was this all the time, dusting off, going, is this how we do our business? And, you know, it's never, I always say a knock at the agency, at the district. It becomes just again inherent in process. And in changing the long-term issue of our funding issues, it's you basically have to change the game and you have to understand the problems. And so I, when I got to HARD, as Peter said, you know, we had a two-week reserve. You know, that was like, you know, operating reserve. Now it's over three months and very vibrant. We did borrow our money from the county. And I says, why are we in the red like half the year? And it was a really, like, you know, the belovedness that we have for these park districts, you know, there was challenges. And so with the bond at F1 that was passed with such an incredible fervor from the community, they said, hey, we need this. It was what Director Rosen talked about, the leveraging of the funds, you know. So we had criticism from some of the community members about purchasing properties because we have to buy them retail. You know, you buy retail property for five grand. But the beauty is putting a grant team in place, identifying an issue, what is the remedy? You put the grant team in place, then we get a $7 million grant from Trust for Public Lands to build a park. So inherent in who we are are structural deficiencies and funding issues. You know, ERAV, as we said, $18 million additional every year, we would be building parks. I mean, we, and, but this is our issue and this will continue to be the issue. And again, it is the leadership that, you know, I've seen in the last 10 years, hiring the right people, hiring the right finance team. It's having, again, you know, I always take the problem, I put it over here because everybody wants to pull the problem back. Like, we know what the problem is. I want the free flow of solutions and bring it out to the forefront. And I agree, a working board, as we all, a lot of us in this room as elected commissioners, you know, the ability to work with your coworkers, you know, Peter Rosen talked about the partnerships, you know, the identifying mutually beneficial partnerships. You can have partnerships all day, but are they mutually beneficial?
This will be the last question so that I can get the closing in. I know we started a little bit late, so we'll run over a little bit. And I'll take five minutes from every other group that we have so that we finish here on time. This, I believe is Mr. Andrade we're starting with first, okay. What is your position on the use of lights at the New Canyon Middle School sports field?
Well, that's a good one. You know, I think people think we're going to do the World Cup up there, you know, and it's not the case. It's going to be, we have to have lights in the winter of some sort. And I'm not quite sure, as far as I know, the new technology with the LED lights, they don't bleed out compared to what you used to see at these high school football stadiums and such. And, you know, it isn't a ball. We need to have some, you know, in the wintertime, you need to have some lights. And it's a joint use between the city and between the city, between the school district and HARD. And those teams need to be able to get there after school hours. In the wintertime, you need to have some lights. So I think we'll work out something. And the technology is really kind of amazing. People really don't know how much is improved. So I don't think that the light bleed is going to be as big a problem as people think it's going to be. And I think it's going to, we're going to be good neighbors. I mean, the school, the school's a good neighbor. And I don't think it's going to be much different than what was there before. So my position is we can work it out.
Yeah, on our agenda tomorrow night is a revision that we've worked up with the school district and coming to agree on a problem, hearing from the community, you know. Sometimes, you know, when you have two opposing, you know, viewpoints, you know, like how is there a solution going to be, you know, handled in this case? And I think by listening, by being structurally, you know, competent to listen in a way that you can come up with a solution that, you know, really, people say that you can't, you know, satisfy everybody. I says, you know what, that, I don't believe that. I think generally people will feel that they're hurt, they'll feel that the issue has been addressed. And so we have on our agenda tomorrow night, a revised use agreement with the school district, taking a look at those hours. And so it was to be at 10 o'clock at night. So we said, hey, let's just cut that back down to 9 o'clock. Lights will, even before the play is done, they'll start to be dimmed. You know, so, you know, creative ways to do this and agree. The stadium lighting, we all grew up, we know exactly how intense those are. And when you, even when you would drive by the Coliseum, you know, the A-Scape, you know, the thing was a beacon. But, you know, the reality, when you look at, you know, we look at studies, we try to be very adept at like, you know, the idea of going through a process. And so when we looked at the details of this type of light, I mean, it's a miniscule comparison. So again, is it going to have light? Yes. So I have four lights. To get the bigger picture, what's for the community, you know, I'm always like, again, back to the partnership, by being able to have these solid partnerships with the school district and be able to talk this, work this out, then we can satisfy what the community wants as well as the residents. And I never say, oh, there's only a small group, because that's not fair. You know, that word is really important to listen to and we can learn. And I think, you know, to change my opinion with new information has been a very good tool I've had as an elected official. Because, you know, we have a lot of knowledge, we have a lot of resources to learn. But sometimes that kind of simple, you know, Steve Kerr listening to the personal trainer kind of aspect of it, going like, I need to, I need to have that ability to do that within our board and our structure.
Mr. Rosen?
So I was fortunate enough to be on the committee. That was one of the committees that I was involved with, with Lavender and with Gary for the school district side of it and then Lou on the HARD side. And when we had been talking about this over the years, it was, we were pretty emphatic that we needed to have lights. Because, I think I looked it up, during the winter equinox or whatever, when there's the least amount of light, it gets dark around 5:30. And if we have soccer teams, if we have baseball teams, if we have softball teams, who knows what's going to happen later if we have field hockey or somebody else does something down the line. But that's way too early. If we want people to use them in the wintertime and kids need to be able to use this. And if we're going to put in lights, I was blown away with how detailed the study was for these lights. As Lou talked about, these lights are not bleeding anywhere. If you look at the study, they're not the old-school lights, as we were talking about. These are not stadium lights. These are going to shine out of a field, they're not going to bleed out, you're not going to see something out in other ways. It's something that's needed. There's over 1,600 Castor Valley soccer kids that are currently playing in all kinds of other fields. If we had limited hours, if we only could go until dusk, they would still need, we'd have to be building more fields. And they wouldn't be able to use it. Yeah, I mean, so it's like, it's one of these things is that this is going to maximize the use of the fields. It's going to serve the Castor Valley community in wonderful ways because now these people aren't going to have to leave. They're going to be able to play soccer on local fields. I think that, I think that as Director Hatcher mentioned, when we look at what's going before us, now the agreement that's been worked out to actually compromise a bit and dim the hours, or dim it before we cut off the hours, I think that will satisfy part of the issue. But I think the lights themselves make it essential. I think it's a great workaround.
Okay, let's go to closing statements now and let's start with Lou again. And let's reduce it to one minute, that way I can get everybody in, alright.
Okay, my closing statement is vote for Louis Andrade on the board, for the HARD board. It's been an honor and a pleasure to be on the district and serving the community. It's been one of the highlights of my life and I've enjoyed serving everyone here. I believe, I want to see how, we're at the end of the bond and there's other issues coming up. I want to see how it turns out. And I want to be part of that, that decision-making process. I think we're going to see some great parks in Castor. I think the Valley View is going to be amazing. And, you know, other challenges will come up and we'll be there. So I want to thank you for your time and I hope for your vote. Alright, thank you.
Mr. Rosen?
I also want to thank everyone for their time. And I'm going to do a plug, quick plug, sorry. After this, immediately after this, Alyssa Marquez is having a meet and greet fundraiser at JP's. It's a great opportunity to talk to supervisor that I think everyone should take advantage of. But back to us, I'm very proud of the work that we've done with HARD. We are at a point now that there's so many things coming down the tracks and the momentum is, of everything that's happening right now. We're going in the best direction of any local organization I know. I'm very proud of everything that we're doing. I'm proud of the people that I work with. Our staff is amazing. I'm not normally a rose-colored glasses guy, but I think we're in a really good spot. And I think if everyone could let us continue doing this and support us and then speak to all of us, because we're all approachable with any issues or anything that comes up, continue to do so and let us move on, move forward.
Thank you, Castor Valley Democratic Club. I, you know, a lot of times during electoral process, you know, it's kind of the, you know, so much is all we and then it's kind of becomes more like what I have done, you know. And I'm like, it's not ever like that. So I am very appreciative of, you know, the groups that are doing the work, like the Democratic Clubs, the associations, you know, and the Cherryland associations and the many other local groups. Because, you know, that to me is really the importance of getting folks involved. And, you know, my goal as an elected official is really to just, you know, inform people, let people know what we have and what we've done in the last 10 years. You know, we just won an award for our budgets, you know. I mean, who wins an award for their budget, you know? It's really amazing. One day I'll look back about, you know, the sleepy HARD. And as we all said, we all, it was all beloved, but in the last 10 years, there's this such a, you know, bylaws done, master plans done, grant team, the foundation is like, you know, just a hidden gem in our community that is putting, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars into our facilities based on just people's pure love. You know, the foundation, people are giving their money to something they care about. And our volunteers, we have about 600 volunteers that work with HARD and you volunteer for things you love. So thank you and look forward to this process.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Our next group up is going to be Castor Valley Unified School District members. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, we have some questions still. Alright. There seems to be a lot of confusion over the ballot. And I knew it would because I tried to explain something I didn't even understand. So- So, let's see, is Jay available?
He's probably at the table there.
Jay?
Jay.
Yeah. Jay, if you can come up, because Jay is our representative that goes to Alameda County Democratic Central Committee, and this is what comes from the Alameda County Democratic Central Committee. Can you explain the voting process to people? What it, if you leave it blank, what does that mean? Okay. And what does that total mean, then? Yes, no, or a?
Or blank.
Or leave it a blank.
Some people are voting X's, and I think that would probably mean a yes.
Yes.
I can't hear you. You could do it person by person.
Person by person. We could do, you could vote person by person. Yeah. You could vote for all three, yes, just vote for each person individually, okay?
Is each person?
Yeah.
Basically, each person gets their own calculation for what 60% is.
There's going to be nine tallies. Nine tallies.
There'll be nine separate tallies. Yeah, what you do for one person isn't going to affect what you do for another.
All right. Are we ready to go? This is our Castro Valley Unified School District candidates, also our incumbents. So I, we have at the end over there Lavender Whitaker. We have in the center Michael Kuziak, and at my immediate right is Dolly Adams. And they are running again. I'm understanding, right? Okay, good. Let's start with your two-minute opening statement, and I will do it alphabetically like I did before, and it's me. Dolly, if you would start, I'm sorry. Ms. Adams, would you start?
Sure. Okay, I didn't exactly make an opening and closing, because I didn't know we were going to need those. However, I have some, some ideas that I'd like to share, just some kind of things. I've lived here in Castro Valley since November of 1989. About 27 years ago, I joined the Castro Valley Democratic Club, when my daughter Natalie, who's 28, was a nine-month-old baby. I was knocking on doors and stuff for, oh, I don't know who it was at the time who was running, but, you know, I have all the old shirts and that sort of thing. And I was able to recruit some other people into the club, like Mary Swain and people like that. That is kind of when I became more politically active, when I joined this club and started doing things for the community. Since that time, I have also done a lot of other things. I am, I have been an associate now on the, let's see, on the ACDCC, or the Alameda County Central Committee, for about seven, eight years. And just recently, in March, I was elected to the Central Committee, and now I'll be a voting member. I've been a delegate to the 20th AD for our area, for the California Democratic Party for about eight years. And so I'm all seeped in the democratic process. In 2020, I was elected to the school board. And being a teacher myself, my love is in education. What I care about is how our kids are doing in our school. That's why I'm involved in politics, because I want the kids and our families to do well. So I belong to, I lately have been going to Rotary as well. I did volunteer for like their Christmas party for battered women and children. And so I'm doing a lot to try to help our community.
Mr. Kuziak.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mike Kuziak. I've been a resident in Castro Valley since 2009, when my wife and I, and our nine-month-old, were trying to find a place with a decently priced house in some great schools. I jumped into Castro Valley very quickly. You know, I take issue with our status as an unincorporated community, and it was sort of baptism by fire, learning about how local government works. And that pulled me into more engagement in the community, whether it was through Castro Valley Matters, which had this really important impact on a lot of people who are now elected officials in this town, and really highlighting the issue of local control. Being a part of the United Against Hate campaign, as the one who brought all those posters in town, 8,000 of them, to really raise awareness around that. Public school, to me, was always a refuge as a child. We were homeless with my mom, she was a single mom. And bouncing around all those years, public school was the gateway for me to get the support and services I need. It gave me an education. When my mom passed away during the campaign, it really hit me about what my values were and why I was in this space. And it was fighting for the kids like me and my sister, who didn't necessarily have a lunch and could get that in our school. And I think about what we do at Castro Valley Unified, providing social and emotional learning, right, and providing mental health. And when you think about what's happened during the pandemic, the gateway, the public school's a gateway, as the front line of what really impacts our youth is important to remember. So I do this from my heart. I understand our public schools as a place of community building. Chabot Elementary is where I was involved very much with my kids. I was the mascot there, led the Halloween festival many years. I care about the fiscal solvency of our schools. I care about that they're working in place for all. And the one thing that I think that we must remember, and I look out at this room, is it's the future. Our kids are very different than who we are in this room. They look very different from us, have different attitudes, and we have to represent the Castro Valley in the future. So I'm doing this with my heart, and wearing it right here, and I hope that you will consider me for support. Thank you.
I'm going to stand up, because it's very hard to introduce myself without standing up and giving the microphone. So hello, everyone. First off, I want to thank the CD Dems for putting this on and creating a space for us to share a little bit about ourselves. My name is Lavender Whitaker, and I first ran for office in 2016 after my husband Nicholas, otherwise known as Dove Whitaker, who was a teacher in the district and also an admin who was fighting for restorative justice practices, giving our diversifying community. He wanted to create a space. He was Iranian-American person who faced a lot of discrimination in his family. And he was an educator and cared about history and teaching history through the lens of everyone's voice, not just one voice. I originally ran to finish what he started, because I care so much about the community that gave so much to us. But a little bit about me, my name is Lavender. Hi, I was born on a hippie commune. Nice to meet you. I was born on an intentional community that was really about community, giving to one another. We traded with the Schumash tribe that lived next door. And I spent my life and my career helping people, protecting people and protecting the environment. I have an undergrad and a bachelor of science in environmental policy and energy policy, and a master's of business administration and organizational development. And I currently serve as the site health and safety officer for a large biopharmaceutical company in California. So for me, I started running because I wanted to finish what Mike started, creating a community that makes sure that everyone and their voice is accounted for, that the kids have what they need based on science-based education, real education, to set them up for success in a globalized society. And I believe that what I've done, my record shows that I've helped us get closer to that. There's always more work to do. And I appreciate you all giving us a voice today, and I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. First question will be, next year Castro Valley High School will implement equity grading school-wide. Why do you support or oppose equity grading? And that will go to Mr. Kuziak first.
So the policy is not finalized yet, and I think what's been really great about that, I read the literature about it, Joe Feldman wrote about grading for equity, and there's been a lot of intentional conversations within our school spaces. I was a part of a work group on that. What, we've already instituted a lot of practices. Equity grading, I think, oftentimes doesn't sound like what people really think it is. It's about meeting kids where they are and not judging them on the worst day of their life. One thing that my kids, I have two kids in the district, I'm a father of two in our district, and they benefit from retakes. And it says that, we know that you can master this work. Show us how you've mastered this work. So that's one practice that I think has been fantastic, that we've seen implemented. And it also, there's an accountability factor there, too. And that's, I think, one of the things we've been trying to work out in a lot of these work groups, talking and listening to our teachers, listening to our teachers' union as well, is hearing, how do we build accountability into the system? I know that when Teddy or Ollie have to make up work, they have, there's something they have to do, there's something they have to do in it. So equitable grading, really, to me, is about how do we ensure that we get our kids to a standard? How do we ensure that the standards that we have implemented in our district are accessible to all? And we don't move on just because they got an F that day when they showed up, because they didn't sleep the night before. Maybe they were dysregulated and didn't, weren't able to, they need to go see their counselor. So it's about really trying to meet the needs of each student, which is really tough to do in a 9,400-student district, right? So I think it more as an opportunity for success for all, and it's not over yet. The contours of that policy have not been written yet, and I think there's more conversations we have to have with our teachers in particular, because we want to make sure it's implemented across departments, across schools, in a way that every kid has a fair chance. It's about mastery, that's what it's about.
Oh, yes, thank you. So to add to what Michael stated, we're not done with this by any means, and there's a lot of community engagement that needs to take place, as well as working with our unions. It's very important that we continue to create a great relationship with our unions. We have a great relationship comparatively to other districts. We work really well together, but it's also about engagement as well. And I like to think of it as this way, if you're thinking about education, what's the goal of education? The goal of education is retention of material. And if kids are not retaining the information, whether or not they're passing the class or not, we failed them. So how might we create an intentional environment that, based on kids' differing abilities, different adversities that they're facing, or how their brain works differently than our own? Create a safe space that provides retention with material that's meaningful. So to me, equitable grading is about how do we ensure that we set our kids up for success, understanding the material that will set them up for success, and help us create a society where we learn from our past?
Thank you. Wow, thank you. Let's see, everybody has answered it?
No, I didn't answer it.
You did not answer the question, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So equitable grading practices, by trade, I'm a special ed teacher. I have been implementing many of the things that we're using in equitable grading practices already in my classroom for 10 years, for a long time. The point of assessment or testing for a child, to try to see if they know the information, does it matter whether they know it today or they know it next week? All I want is for them to know that piece of information. So if they retake the test a week later, and they're able to pass it and able to learn that common core standard, why not let them do that? Why just go on and leave them in the dust where, let's say, maybe the average or high performers are doing fine, and those who need more help, we don't want to leave them behind. So we want to try to get everybody to be able, I mean, if a kid didn't know how to read, would we just say, oh, that's too bad, we'll just pass you to the next grade, you don't know how to read? No, we would stop, and we would do some more phonics, or we would, we would teach them again, we would reteach that item, which is something we've been using in the classrooms related to all of this RTI, response to intervention, which takes kids that haven't learned a concept and reteaches it to them. You reteach it, then with the equitable grading practices, you also then, you give them a new assessment. This also builds the child's confidence. Then they can feel like they have succeeded, and they know this. And then when they go to the next grade, they have that concept and they're not behind. So equitable grading helps all kids, not just special ed kids. It can help foster kids, economically disadvantaged kids, or even AP, a kid who's taking AP classes who maybe couldn't get to sleep last night. Equitable grading practices make sense.
So the next question relates to and ties in maybe to what you're talking about now. Is the virtual high school program utilized as a credit recovery program?
Who goes first? I lost track. I knew I was last. He was first. It was supposed to be Lavender.
Lavender, thank you.
I, what a lot of people in our community don't understand is that we have this wonderful high school, Redwood High School, that also has a virtual academy. And it can be credit recovery, but it can also be for advanced students or students who are intermarial sports, who travel the country regularly, and it's an accredited school. We have really invested in supporting all of our students, regardless of where they're at. Some kids face adversity, and we want to make sure that we give them opportunities to continue on their education, because we want them to be successful. But we also have varying different people who are, you know, they need to be virtual for other reasons, or they're much more advanced and they don't really work within the school system. So it's creating the different places that help support the needs of our differing students to help set them up for success the best possible.
Thank you. Excuse me, this is about the time I lose my voice in the afternoon. So the next question would be based on...
Should I?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could you repeat the question?
Okay. Is the virtual high school program utilized as a credit recovery program? Maybe I should add a little bit, because district-wide, there's been a lot of conversation about the virtual program being utilized to bring up kids to a certain level, to graduate them. Maybe that helps you with your response a little bit, okay?
And who's going second?
Michael.
Okay.
So one thing that, one thing that, just for the audience's benefit, when you switch from middle school, it's the best to take Spanish or something, and when you go into high school, you go from getting grades, passing, to credit, it's all based on credit. So our focus on summer school oftentimes is credit recovery. That's oftentimes why kids are going to summer school. What the virtual academy lets us do, and this goes to, I think, a really good investment on the prior board, when we got into the pandemic, we already had a virtual academy. This let us leverage that when everyone else was freaking out across the state, how are we going to keep kids educated? And it gave us more choices, which is really important. I'm about to be the father of a sophomore in high school. I cannot tell you how fun it is to wake him up in the morning. There are conversations in the Kuziak household about, hey, Teddy, you want to take a class or two of the virtual academy? This may let you do this. It also helps kids who might have to support their family, who might work in the afternoon, might have a job. So this lets them take a class or two virtually. It lets other kids, I know one student who is completely in the virtual academy now, and it supports their mental health, it supports where they're at in their life right now. So I would just sort of shift the question not to pivot and like be all politician about it, but it, as a tool, is very important within our district. And the fact that we made the investment in it prior to the pandemic was a big deal. And I think post-pandemic, it creates really good pathways along with Redwood, right, for kids who might need a different type of experience in getting through their whole years of high school.
My throat is going, too, so. The virtual academy is at Redwood, and that's the school that I used to teach at. So I had friends, of course, who taught at the virtual academy. It's, it has, as already stated, it has a number of different types of students at it. Some of them are using it for credit recovery. That is, they failed classes, they need to take this online, and they do that sometimes while you have a dual enrollment at Castro Valley High, and then maybe you're taking some classes also at the virtual academy. Sometimes it's in reverse, where somebody is mostly at Redwood at the virtual academy, and they just take a couple of classes at Castro Valley High. This is very flexible, it helps with our students who need this flexibility in order to graduate. We want to try to graduate every single student, that's our goal. We don't want to leave anybody behind. So the virtual academy has really very well planned out classes, and they are online with a program that is accredited. It is not like an easier way to do things. The only thing easier about it is that you're not in a school building, that you could do it at home, that you could do it in the evenings, maybe, maybe, like for me, I love, I wrote all these cards in the evening. That's when my brain works the best. That's a time maybe when another student, when they study and when they learn the best. The virtual academy... The virtual academy is a great tool for us to help the most amount of students. It's a growing population of students that are using this program, and part of that, I think, is that flexibility about taking some in-person classes and some online classes.
You mentioned it is a program.
Oh.
That is...
No, it's, is it a program or a school?
It's a school.
It's a school. It's a school within Redwood.
Okay, it's just a school, it's not a company that you purchased.
We purchased a program, but the virtual academy school itself...
What is the name of the program?
I don't remember the name of the program.
Is there a virtual academy?
No, 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 there is a computer program that they use for that. And there's a couple of different ones that you could use, and we've used two different kinds at Redwood. I just don't remember the names of them right now.
But each of our school sites are assigned a code from the state of California. It is, it is assigned its own distinct code as a school.
As a school.
Okay. We are to that point, you know, lots of questions, but we never get to all of them, we know that. One minute closing, and I believe I'm going to start with Michael.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you all for having us here today. It's been a privilege to be, it's a privilege not an honor to be on the school board. I know that not everyone gets the opportunity to do this. Just quickly, I'm endorsed by Congressman Swallow, Sheriff Jacinda Sanchez, Liz Ortega, my two colleagues here, Ayesha Knowles, George Surratt over at Hayward Unified. You know, it's more than me just wanting to hand my kid his high school diploma in a few years, but let me tell you, that's one thing that I look forward to in a second term. There's a lot of work we need to do with the fiscal stability of the district, planning possibly for another bond measure, maybe another partial tax. We have physical infrastructure in this district that needs our attention. Working in local government districts is not fun. We are limited in the amount of funds we get to do what we want to do, but I'm really proud with the finite resources we do have, the accountability with which this district does operate. And I want to fight more for our teachers, for our students, for our better Castor Valley Unified. Thank you.
Thank you. Lavender?
Thank you all for coming today and listening to us speak. You know, some of you may have heard that I was considering not running again. When you lose a partner to cancer at the age of 36, it's hard to hear their name and hear their stories over and over again, right? You want to process that. But the reason why I ran is because we are facing adversity, and it's a presidential election here. The rhetoric is going to increase, and pushing back on educating our kids with science-based education, with teaching them about diversity, about setting them up for success in a globalized society, we face a lot of pressure. And I did my work looking for another candidate, I did not find anybody who wanted to get that $250 stipend a month to put in all this work and effort. And so I really do feel that I want to commit to helping us continue the work that we do to help our kids, continuing to help teach science-based education and push back against those who want to other others, those who want to discriminate against kids and not give them the support that they need, because it's our job. Our job is to help our kids, and if we're not fighting against the rhetoric, if we're not fighting against all the hate, I'm not sure who will. So I appreciate your consideration, and thank you so much again.
Thank you. Last one, please.
I moved here to Castor Valley because of the schools. Then I worked for Castor Valley Unified because it was such a good school district. Now I am honored to shape the policy in the Castor Valley schools because it's a great place to live. We have, one of the things that I think I bring to the board and why I think I would love to have your vote, is I, from my experience, I tend to focus on like special ed kids or the, those kids. I think when you meet the needs of students that are educationally challenged, like special ed kids, foster kids, English language learners, economically disadvantaged kids, that's when you have a great district. Children like my daughter, who are in AP classes and graduating with high honors, do well in almost any public school. That's my experience. I worked in San Leandro High, I worked at Hayward High. The high-level kids will do well in any, just about any school. But the kids who have the greater problems, that's where you need a great school, where all means all, brings all of the boats up. We have so many different programs that help our kids, and we are trying to diversify. We are, we, you know, we, all of, everybody here were board members during the whole pandemic, and we went through that, and we somehow managed to, to get through all of that. And we have a very high functioning board. We get along. When we don't agree, we are able to compromise and come up with the good solutions. We see dysfunctioning boards around us. We see in Synol, they have people from the far right that are being recalled now. So you don't really want those folks to be, you know, on your school board. And in Hayward, they have also some people on the right that are dysfunctional. We are a good functioning board, please vote for me.
Thank you. I want to thank you all for coming today, taking some of your Sunday to come and speak with us. Thank you very much. Last but not least, Castor Valley Sanitary District. Roxanne? Roxanne? Roxanne, do we have any questions for CD SAN?
No.
Okay. Let's see if anybody understands.
Opening to closing.
All right, let's start, let us start with our opening statements. Two minutes as a reminder here, and let's start with Danny Akagi.
Okay. My name is Danny Akagi, I happen to be the most senior member of the board right now. I first got on the board in May of 95, replaced, was appointed to replace Don Scrue. Thank you for inviting us. I think Tim and Dave and I, we represent members of a highly functional board. We've been that way for many years. We've set up the district to, for success in the future. Some of the future things we'll be looking at are increased regulations on nutrients from wastewater, increased regulations on processing and handling solid waste. So there's a lot to be done to meet all regulations. The district is financially sound, we were, we have one of the lowest rates in the Alameda County, and we actually had enough funding in place for the first year of COVID to not, to not go through a scheduled rate increase. So I think we're doing a good job, and I hope you can put us back in the office for another four years. Thank you.
Mr. McGowan.
Want to reset the clock? Not that I think we'll use all two minutes, but thank you everyone for joining us today. I know Sunday, it's beautiful out there, great to be at the beach, but you're all here with us, that shows a lot of commitment on your part to make sure that local government works. A little bit about me, I'm married, I have two kids, my kids have gotten a lot older now, my eldest is 20 and my younger one 17. They both graduated from Castor Valley High School. I've been a big believer of our school district, and I appreciate the school board members who just spoke to us. Kind of on a verge of a transition though, Justin, that, you know, I've got both those young kids, they've gone off to college, they're going to be an empty master for the first time. It's going to give me more free time to come here and be with you more often, which will be great. There was a time where I was vice president of this organization, but, you know, kids came, I had to step back, but I'm looking forward to getting more active in the community as free time comes to me. A little bit about me professionally, I work as a civil engineer with East Bay Mud, I'm the senior engineer in charge of our major facilities planning section, which means I have four engineers under me. We design water treatment plants, pumping plants, water storage tanks, and water pipes for our distribution system. And so it's not exactly wastewater, but it's close enough in relationship that there isn't a big leap between one, what I do during the day and what I do during the evening. For CD SAN, I've been on that board for 20 years, and I've been the chair of our finance committee, where I've been responsible for making sure that we have balanced budgets, or more than balanced, we always have a surplus, we do audits, and we set the rates. So thank you.
Dave Sadoff?
Good afternoon, my name is Dave Sadoff. Thank you to the Castor Valley Democratic Club for hosting this. It's very important for our community to meet up in close and personal the candidates, I appreciate that. As a member of the Board of Directors of the Castor Valley Sanitary District for the past several years, I've been committed to serving the public interests of Castor Valley through safe, efficient, and cost-effective wastewater and solid waste management. I'm a 32-year resident of Castor Valley and married with two children who attended Castor Valley schools. I'm a professional geologist specializing in environmental and hydrogeology issues for the past 38 years. I'm a board member of the Alton County Waste Management Authority, and I was recently elected by my peers, which are city, city mayors and councilmen, Orland Sanitary District and the county itself, each have a seat in this board. I was elected by those peers to be the second vice president, which will mean I'll be the president of the WMA in two years. During my service to you, the Castor Valley Sanitary District has been recognized as an efficient and innovative agency, and has been the recipient of numerous awards. With your vote, I will continue to help guide CD SAN's commitment to excellence. Above all, I will always remember that I work for you, and will continue to strive to make sure that the Castor Valley Sanitary District provides you with the best possible service at the lowest possible rates. I respectfully ask for your vote.
Thank you. And since there aren't a lot of questions, I do have one, and you offer services to the total community. Well, we are all facing what are referred to as the RENA numbers, Regional Housing Needs Assessment. How will that impact what, how you do your job as board members? And I believe it's going to be Mr. McGowan first.
In some ways, it's not going to be a big impact for us at all, provided that the development occurs somewhat evenly over our collections area. And I guess what I mean by that is, you know, we have adequately sized pipes for a reasonable amount of development that goes into place. So if one or two neighbors on a block adds a backyard unit or sub divides, that's not really a challenge. Now, if you have every, you know, the new laws allow you to, on one lot, to build two primary homes and two ADUs. If you had a block where every house did that, we would need up-sized pipes, and that would be, you know, unfortunate and expensive. That's not how I think it's going to play out overall. I think that it's going to be somewhat sporadic and throughout, and we'll be able to accommodate it with the infrastructure that we have.
Sure.
Yeah, this is actually promulgated from the state level, coming down, and the county puts together the housing plan and so forth. There are legislators that want to, due to the housing problem, and it is a huge problem, want to allow for the expeditious building of typically condensed housing that will have, requires obviously sanitary sewage surfaces, as well as other utilities. The concern that I would have for, for our agency is that if there are a high-rise consolidated structure or structures that went up in an area that we are underserved, underpiped, as Tim was mentioning, we would have to impose a rather significant charge to, it's basically like a legacy fee to buy into our systems and to upgrade our pipes. As long as that was, if they were capable of that from a monetary standpoint, and as far as they passed the other regulatory hurdles and community. I can see there being lawsuits still against this type of development, so we shall see. CD SAN is a very adaptable organization. We have, during the storms that we've had, the terrible storms, there was a washout over in the Canyonlands, so we could get our trucks up there, but we had a backup plan, which we implemented, and there's barely a space that went by in service. And we had this plan all set up, and we were able to service these people. It's just an example of how we can pivot on a dime if we have to.
Okay, so the housing requirement's pretty interesting. We are prohibited from charging a connection fee, which would be the legacy buy-in fee for ADUs, for instance. And politicians have actually implemented that, we heard through the Redvine, they basically said, well, you're a local agency, you can raise your fees. No! So, yeah, that's what they said. So anyway, that would be one challenge. So if there were a whole lot of ADUs, they'd be spread out, so hydraulic data probably wouldn't be too much of a challenge, but we would, that would restrict one of our revenue sources. Another one, for instance, BART, there was more legislation that allows transit districts to build on their parking lots. So the BART parking lot, in my day work, I worked in Berkeley, and we have North Berkeley BART and Ashby as BART stations, and they're, they're looking at putting 600 to 700 units on the parking lot. The parking lot here is quite a bit larger, so I would imagine 700 to 800, or perhaps even more, I don't know what the number's going to be. We do know it's coming, or we expect it to come, and we, one of the planning things we put in place over the years we've been on the board is we do master plans. We look at the hydraulics, we look at the growth projections. We're going into a master plan update, and we're going to crank that one into it. So we'll be prepared, and we'll let BART know. So that's, the housing is an interesting one. We, as the service provider, do not provide or do not have any authority over the housing. We have to accommodate, and we're doing enough advanced planning to do that.
Maybe each of you can explain what the new regs for wastewater management mean to us here as residents?
Well, you might need to be a bit more specific. I'm assuming you're talking about the nutrient removal regulations that are currently...
Yes, the new regs.
Okay. Who do you want to start?
I'll start with you, Tony.
Perfect. So, you know, I guess the step back a bit, about two summers ago, we had, the Bay Area had a fish kill, and it hit the news, I think mostly by the fish that died in Oakland. And this was something that hadn't happened in the Bay Area before, and it's related to our changing environment. Two things have essentially changed. We don't get quite as much bay fog as we used to, and so now the bay sees more sunlight for more hours on hotter days, and the bay itself is not as cloudy as it used to be. And both of those combined together to allow algae to grow that just hadn't grown before. And so there wasn't the need for us to remove as many nutrients from our waste stream. And what the regulators are essentially saying is, well, the climate has changed, we need, you know, all the wastewater treatment plants that contribute to the bay to reduce their nutrients. The challenge for the Castor Valley Sanitary District Board is that we were, we've always been in advance of regulations, and in this case, we did a nutrient removal project and finished it, I would like to say three or four years ago, could be just a touch bit more than that. So we've actually already did the easy nutrient removal already. And when we did that, we were promised that we, that that would be taken into account when any future regulations came forward, and that is not how it's appearing to shape up. And so we're still at a stage of evaluating... And so we're still at a stage of evaluating what the final regulations will be. At this point, the regulators have published a draft set of it. Once it is finalized, we will have to meet with our engineers, figure out what nutrient processes we can do. I think our biggest opportunity is that the compliance points where all six wastewater treatment points come together, and we may be able to partner with some of our other wastewater treatment plants to do collaborative projects instead of upgrading each plant.
I'm going to go with Danny. Do you want to add to that?
Yeah, see, so much of what we do with the sanitary district, especially with wastewater treatment, I tell my kids, you know, my son made a comment one time, I want to be a lawyer. I made, I commented to him, okay, you're going to practice the laws of man. I'm an engineer. I practice the laws of physics. So what Tim just described, is you can't vary too much from that. It's some treatment process that we'll have to look at, we'll probably have to optimize something at the plant. It's very, there's not going to be a whole lot of variability in that. It's just to what degree we can negotiate with the water board to soften the impact, maybe timing, how we phase it or something like that. So you're not going to hear a whole lot of variation, at least in that regard, in this discussion, partially because it's just the physics of it, the chemistry of it, plus as board members, we don't get into that much detail on, you know, we'll argue with the water board, we'll fight with the regulators. Our staff are the ones that know 10 milligrams per liter of this, 100 milligrams per liter of that. That's not our, our behavior. So what Tim described is, is not going to, I don't think it varies too much among the three of us.
Do you have something you can add?
Sure. Yeah, these unfunded mandates happen to come down quite a bit from regulatory agencies and so we have to account for that, obviously, in our CIP budget. We try to see what's coming through from afar, if we can, just to plan accordingly so that we won't have to hit our repairs with a huge hike all at once. Try not to do that if at all possible. Talking about the relationships with the regulators, it's highly complex. We did have a handshake deal with regulators and that building this expensive system of optimization for nutrient removal would take us off the hook for years for that particular item. And it's unfortunate that we deal with personalities and personalities and people at regulation, regulatory bodies tend to change. So we're picking up the pieces of that right now. The other thing I wanted to bring up is the relationship that we have with our colleagues at Oreloma. These are all complexities that the three of us, having been in the, you know, at the line of scrimmage in the, what do they call it there, where you're really doing the battle to on the field, we have a pretty good knowledge of what's happened before, where we're at, and where is a good likely outcome that we have to look at. And so we also have to deal with Oreloma. We own 25% of the plant. So we are now on terrific terms with them. It wasn't always that case. When I first started on in 2011 on this board, it was, it was difficult at times to deal with our colleagues. We were looked at a little bit down upon. Now we have a level of respect both ways that is working, that we have all worked towards and we are at now. So when we have these kinds of problems, we can, as a unit, come to a conclusion that's beneficial.
Perfect, thank you. And we are at the time for closing statements. And as you say, I'm going to start with you and then we'll go straight down the line.
Sure. Okay, so I thought I'd just do a brief little, you know, how I got into politics. I was just thinking, it's kind of by chance, really. Back in 2000, I was part of a neighborhood group and we were fighting a, one of the second last chicken ranches in Castro Valley, the Alton Chicken Ranch, over there by Seven Hills, between Seven Hills and Malabar, I can remember who that is, Redwood. And so we fought this and we actually sued the county. We didn't think, they, they were just trying to have this fly through, no problem. And we were thinking, it's historic. Chicken ranching is a part and parcel of Castro Valley's history. And I just want to wipe it away and throw in 17 homes. And so we weren't having any of that. We wanted at least something to come from that. So after that fight, we unfortunately lost that fight, but they put me on the Parks Recreation Historical Commission. And through that, we came up with, after a number of years, a countywide historic preservation ordinance, which is what I wanted, so that people could, had an incentive to reserve their properties. When that passed, after several years, I felt that that was the main goal that I'd been pushing. And so I resigned from the PRHC at that time and then went on to the MAC. They put me on the MAC after that, where I served three, four-year terms and termed out. One of the bigger things we dealt with there was the turn of the道sri building into best use, best and highest use. Some folks wanted there to be housing units up on top and others wanted to be plantable housing units. And I thought the best and highest use for that was pretty much what we have now. Unfortunately, some of the management, I think it's run us some issues with some of those stores. I think it still has wonderful potential and we'll be looking back on it proudly in 10 or 20 minutes. Lastly, Waste Management Authority Board. I was the only person in Castro Valley who got to vote on the single-use plastic bag ban out of 60,000 people. And I am, it's probably one of the happiest votes I've ever voted back on.
Thank you.
Thank you for inviting us. I think we're a high-functioning board. We've got a very stable, we're a very stable board. We have, we collectively set up our policies to allow our general manager to hire and retain very talented and very qualified staff to deliver, to deliver services to you in an efficient manner. The district has won several awards in solid waste and wastewater collection and at the treatment plant. Some of our projects have, we have nutrient removal, we've also looked at, explored some ways to deal with sea level rise. So I hope you can, I would like to see all three of us get reelected, is my, is my message. Thank you.
And I would like to echo Danny's sentiment. I think we are a very high-functioning board. We've worked together for a long time. And, you know, there are things that come from the, that much collaboration. We, when we have issues, we know that relationships matter. It's not about winning, it's about coming up with the best solution. And you get that when you have some longevity on your board and you really appreciate one of, one another. You know, things that I see that I really want to work on moving into the future, we talked about nutrient removal, but getting into our ONE building, I think is going to be a fantastic improvement for the community, especially looking forward to, pre-pandemic, we used to bring elementary school kids to our building, but we didn't really have a great space for them. We had to, you know, redoctor our board room to take in the kids and as soon as they left, push it back till the staff could use it. This new ONE building is going to have a very large block conference room that will be able to be set up as a classroom, and we're going to have an outdoor classroom. We're going to be able to do fantastic things with the kids. I really like what we've done on our sewer outreach. I don't know who's watched YouTube lately, but you can't watch YouTube now without one of our sewer outreach videos reaching you. And, you know, I know that we have a good outreach when, you know, my daughter comes back and tells me the three Ps, you know, it's like, they're getting it, it's out there. We also did a comic book. And when we did the comic book, I thought we were going to be reaching like 10-year-olds, 11-year-olds. But what surprises me is the high school students like the comic book. And I just went to a conference last week and I have sanitary districts coming to me at the statewide conference saying, we're copying your comic book. You know, it's truly amazing. And that's work that no other sanitary district even thought of doing. We also have a great, well, please vote for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Can you turn your bail up into Roxanne?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, for coming today and thank you, our candidates, for your, you are good to see you guys.